Good evening and welcome to the School Committee of the East Bridgewater Public Schools for May 24, 2022. I ask you to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would take a moment. There was a tragedy today at a elementary school in Texas. I would take a moment of silence to reflect on public education and students and faculty, and our thoughts and prayers go out. Thank you. First order of business this evening is the annual --
Lieutenant, please have a motion.
Oh, sorry. Do I have a motion to open the meeting?
So moved.
Thank you. Motion by Amanda.
Second.
Second by Scott. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The first order of business this evening is the annual organization of the school committee as required by policy. Action should be taken on the following: the election of officers. You ready?
Yeah.
Do I have a motion for chair?
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Ellen Pennington as Chair of the East Bridgewater School Committee.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Lauren. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Here you go. All yours. All yours.
I don't need to bang it.
No.
Okay. At this time, I take a motion for Vice Chair. Actually, I would nominate Amanda Coligan for Vice Chair.
Second.
Any discussion? Sorry, I'm a little rusty. All in favor?
Aye.
And I would take a motion at this time to nominate someone as Secretary.
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Lauren as Secretary.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And at this time, we have -- so the treasurer, we don't nominate anyone because the superintendent is our fiduciary. She's the fiduciary of the district. So we can vote, because it's probably a technicality that we vote to have you. So I motioned that Liz is our fiduciary, and she's the treasurer of our district. So I guess I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And so Joanne Benner is the school committee clerk. So we just need a motion to appoint Joanne Benner as our school committee clerk.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And appointments of the standing committees. Let's see. I'm going to go down through them. So I would like to continue being legislative liaison if nobody has any -- if nobody minds. Okay, thank you. And the Policy Subcommittee, Standing Committee to Update Policy, I was thinking that -- I know that.
You're a little rusty, but it's okay.
I am very rusty. So is anybody interested in being on? And I will say I am interested in continuing being on it.
I'm happy to continue as well, being on the Policy Committee.
We need a third person.
I can do it.
Scott?
Okay. Thank you. And then the Superintendent Lago is always the school committee representative to the Reed's Collaborative and PCC, so that remains the same. And the same for a school committee representative to North River Board of Directors, Superintendent remains the same. School Committee Representative to Town Insurance Committee, Mr. Walker, that was you before, but would you like to continue doing that, or would somebody else like to do it?
I'll continue.
Okay.
Unless someone else is really hoping to be on there.
Insurance.
Thank you. And then the grievance hearing officer would be me, because that's who I usually is. And then Bargaining Subcommittee for the Certified Professional Contract, that is, we had Tim, who was on it and is no longer here. So is anybody else interested in being on it? I would like to remain, but so we just, that's the teacher's contract, and we just did it. So most likely, it won't come up again for another three years.
That sounds like one. I'd jump right on. Well done.
But in case we need to do something, is anybody else interested?
I'm happy to do it if you don't want to do it, Ellen.
Oh, no. I would do it, but we need another person.
Ellen's already on it.
Oh, do we need three?
No, two.
No, Tim was on it.
Right. So it's Gordon and Ellen? Yes?
I think he was being sarcastic.
Oh.
Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry.
No.
I don't need to be sarcastic.
No, it's sorry. Not reading the room tonight. Yeah, I'm happy to do it if no one else would like to.
Andrew can do it. Look at --
Amanda, okay. Bargaining Subcommittee for Assistant Principals Contract, we had Lauren Foster. Would you like to remain doing that? And then anybody else interested?
What's the status?
Oh, sorry.
They'll come up 2024, 2023, not the school year, following school year, 23, 24.
Or we should still put someone.
I'm happy to do it.
Okay, thank you. And Bargaining Subcommittee for Non-Certified Contract, we have Amanda, would you like to continue doing that, or?
Unless anyone, I think it's the same timeline, right?
Yep. They all come up on outside of the teacher's contract.
And we need a second person. Thank you. That's Lauren. And Budget Subcommittee, we have Mrs. Foster, Mrs. Pennington, and well, an empty spot. And Lauren, would you like to continue doing that?
Yes.
And anybody?
Whoever you do that one.
Rebecca?
Yeah.
And Lauren, you want to keep doing it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And if nobody minds, I would like to keep doing it also. Voting Delegate to Annual Conference of MASCE/MASS. So this is that conference that we have in November.
They are having it this year.
Yes.
I saw it.
I was --
It said there, it's on.
Yeah.
I was at last year. They had both in virtual, they had in-person and virtual options. I'm sure who knows what it'll be this year, but.
Yeah, he told us last week at a meeting that
It'll be at least.
they're planning on having it down in Hyannis.
Okay.
In person.
I'll be going. I know I'll be going, so I don't know if anyone else, I'm happy to take the role. Unless somebody else is going, they can do the role. Fine with me.
I'm not sure if I'll be able to go. And Gordon's done it a million times.
Yeah, if Gordon's planning on going anyway.
Okay.
Yeah, that works for me.
Subcommittee to Update Educational Philosophy of the District. For this Subcommittee, we had Amanda and Scott, and we have an empty spot, and.
I am happy to not be on this committee if other folks would like to as well, but.
Anyone? I would put, and this one, I'm going to put a little stipulation, we really need to get this done. So I would put a timeline on it. I would say hopefully by maybe the first or second meeting in August, or even the first one in September. Like, we need to get it done.
I'm happy to be on it, since we're running out of roles. I feel like I'm not pulling my weight here.
Okay. And then, so we have two other people. We had Amanda and Scott. Do you, anybody else want to do it?
I'll stay on it.
Anybody else?
I'm dying to do it.
Okay.
Thanks, babe.
You're welcome.
And then we have, so this, okay, I'll skip that one for a minute. I'll go to the next one. School Committee Representative to Capital Needs Planning Committee. That one was Amanda Coligan. And if anybody wants to do it, if Amanda wants to continue or doesn't want to continue, is anybody interested?
I've done it before. I don't mind doing it again. I don't want to, if someone else wants it.
You can do it again, Gordon. I'm sure, you did a swell job, so.
You don't know that.
We did a good job.
But I'll do it. Thank you.
Thanks, Gordon. And then I'm going to go to the next one. Standing Committee for School Committee Goals. So we have Trista, who was on it, she's no longer here. And then we had Lauren Foster and me. And this one needs to meet just to revamp, and we probably need to have a workshop about it. But is anybody interested in being on this committee, this Subcommittee?
I'll be on it.
Are you interested? Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you, Lauren. And Amanda. So that leads me to the next one, which we can come back at another later time. Subcommittee for Superintendent's Evaluation Process, which was disbanded previously, and we, so.
Can I speak to that?
Sure, go ahead.
So some school committees have it, some school committees don't. I think to have a school committee evaluation team, it's good, because we stay on track and we meet. For whatever reason, I think Mr. McLaughlin had a meeting with Nick Dominello, or called Nick. I did speak to Mr. Dominello the other day, and I said, was there a recommendation? Or how did this work? Because we don't really have a timeline. My goals were done very late. They weren't at the beginning. I said, so we're out of whack. I said, but however, I'll do whatever you want me to do, and I'll continue to do what you want me to do. I said, but this is what happened. I don't think Mr. Dominello knew that, and I don't think, I don't think Tim did it, doing it out of any other reason but trying to keep things moving ahead. But I do think it's a good process to have an evaluation Subcommittee. I think the disbanding of it wasn't because he was doing it for any other reason, but trying to just keep the agenda moving forward. And the attorney can recommend, and just say, some school committees have it and some school committees don't. So, but I do, I think that it's a good idea to have it. And I've talked to other superintendents over the last couple of weeks, just to see what they have. Many that I spoke to have the Subcommittee.
And well, can I chime in?
Sure.
I ended up talking to Jim Hardy, and he did say that there are school committees that have Superintendent Evaluation Subcommittees. And when I spoke with Barbara about it, I don't remember when I spoke with her about it, but when I spoke with her about it, she said that there was a Superintendent Evaluation Subcommittee long before she worked here. So that's all I wanted to say.
What is the role of the Evaluation Subcommittee?
So what they do is, the three people would meet, and meet with the superintendent, and talk, go over what they would be, what the superintendent would be evaluated on. And then it comes back to the full committee, because no decisions can be made by a Subcommittee without coming back to the full committee for discussion and a vote. So that's maybe the misconception of people out there in the world, that the Subcommittee's can just go make decisions arbitrarily without going back to the full committee, without making, you know, having a discussion and voting. So anything that's discussed in a Subcommittee comes back to the full committee always for a vote and for a discussion.
Does the Subcommittee mean that, does it limit who can contribute to the evaluation? So all committee members could still contribute, it's just that these three people are kind of running, like, not running, but managing the process?
Yes. Everybody.
It's really because at these meetings, and we would take 20, 30, 40, 5, an hour, an hour and 15, maybe an hour and a half to talk about all the goals. We could sit for a Monday night, you know, three people, go over each goal, and say, geez, Liz, we only want you to work on one goal, because we really want to get this accomplished. Or let's pick a goal in each area, you know, whatever it is. And then, and then there are indicators, and not, so then it comes back to the team, and you say, hey, we chose these three goals. We feel they're good. We had a great conversation with Liz. We feel we can get this done. And we'll do a mid-cycle in January, and then we'll come back around in June. Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Instead of having those two-hour conversations here, we have those, and we iron it out. And then if there is an issue with a goal at any time, you can call a meeting. We can sit back down and say, geez, I can even ask, this goal cannot be accomplished. It's just too much, or it's just not going to happen. Or it was too easy, and we got it done. Well, look. So.
Yeah, I think we, I mean, toward made everything out of whack, because I think we were, it was supposed to happen right around when everything shut down, right? Like that spring, and then everything just a couple from there. And the other thing, just to keep in mind also, and this is really more for Becky, because I know you've done this before, Gordon, but there's no expectation that you all will participate, like, right now in our evaluation process. Like, we give you some time to breathe and get used to things, too, I think.
I think I found when we had one, it just helped us, it helped us to be organized.
Almost like a project manager of that.
Yep, yep. So is everybody okay with, I guess I would take a motion to reinstitute or reinstate the Subcommittee for Superintendent Evaluation Process.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Well, now we have to decide who's going to be on it. Lauren? I would like to be on it. And Amanda?
Sure.
Three, all three? Good. Thank you. Oh, I'm remiss in my organizing. Liz reminded me that I need to remind you to, I mean, remind myself, and remember to welcome you to, because I did not do that. And I'm very sorry. I was caught up in this. So welcome. I'm glad to have you back, Gordon, and welcome, Becky.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think it's going to be a good year.
You think?
Well, okay, I know. I can speculate.
Lucy, what Subcommittees do you want to be on?
All of them.
Yeah, I know.
I'll be available.
At this time, I would take a motion to approve the mission statement, the School Committee Mission Statement. It's the East Bridgewater Public School District in partnership with the community continues to provide an academically challenging, safe, and supportive learning environment that promotes the pursuit of excellence for all.
So moved.
Moved by Amanda?
Second.
Second by Scott. All in favor?
Aye.
Are you voting?
No, I would have jumped into the discussion.
Oh, any discussion, Gordon?
Obviously, mission statements, a great thing to have. I guess I wonder, how does it get incorporated into people's everyday, I don't know, every day is probably a bit of a stretch, but mission statements are good as long as they live. So I don't know. Liz, are you comfortable with how much people pay attention to it, or how it guides decisions, or however you want to think of it?
I think that, I think it lives in us. I don't think we say it quite in that term every morning.
It's like the Pledge of Allegiance.
But I do think it, I do think we look for excellence, and I think we're supportive. And I think we are working on becoming a truly inclusive school district. And we work on it every day. And we're really working on being supportive. And we don't, we saw, we had strengths, and with COVID showed us where our real strengths were, and showed us where weaknesses are. And I think that we've really worked on our weaknesses.
Okay.
And I think that it is, it is living.
Yeah.
And it is, you know.
No, thank you. Now, companies I've seen that have really strong mission statements and perhaps philosophies, you can see it's just in the fabric of what they do. So I was just curious. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And Educational Philosophy will pass over. That would help if I had this. Lucy.
My turn.
Our School Committee Rep. Sadly, this is your very last meeting.
It is.
I'm sad to see you go.
It went by fast.
We see your eyes welling up.
Lucy is a senior, and she is graduating this year. She's going off to college.
Sad. Yeah, all right.
Do you have one last report for us?
I do have one last report. It's mainly from the high school building. There's a lot going on for this last month. Senior prom is this Friday on May 27, and graduation will be the following week on June 3 at 6:00 p.m. The high school senate is holding a senior send-off spirit week, which was, has been a lot of fun. There's been a lot of participation throughout grade seven through 12. That's been nice to see. Pride Month is in June, and the LGBTQA plus club will be holding a spirit week with announcements and activities throughout the month. There'll be an eighth grade week during their last week of school at the end of June. Today, juniors went to BSU for a college fair, and I heard good feedback. A lot of talking to colleges, which is always good. On June 7, the juniors will be able to, like, go to a credit-for-life fair, which will learn how to make a financial plan and how to learn some life lessons. And good stuff. Ms. Harmon and Mr. Fox have been going to the Mitchell School to introduce the sixth graders to the schedule, the high school schedule, to make the transition easier. And they're continuing to do so. And that will be very helpful, I think. Junior, senior high school students are set to get their schedules by the end of the summer, no, by the beginning of the summer. Before the summer even starts, they'll get their schedules, which is good. And I think lastly, I just want to talk about how the high school has been moving away from finals. And for me, I've, and a lot of my classmates, I know we've had a very positive experience with that. Not having finals, I feel like it's taking, like, a better way to, like, show what you learned throughout the year by doing, like, a culminating project at the end, rather than taking a test. So it's been a good experience for my classmates and I. And in a few weeks, when the other grades are doing it, at the end of the very end, they're doing their last project, so hopefully see a nice little, like, final product of what they've learned. And that's, that's all I have today.
That's it?
Yeah, that's it.
What's going on next week, right?
Yes.
Thank you. No, you're excited? You have prom on Friday.
Yes. Good stuff. I'm excited.
We have a card and some flowers for you.
Thank you. And lastly, I just want to say thank you to everyone. This has been a really good experience. And it was so nice to, like, meet you guys, get a little taste of what it's like to be on a school committee.
Don't let it deter you.
Oh, no, absolutely not. And Lilia over there, Eva Gindis, she's going to be taking my spot. She is a rising junior. And I have, she, you'll be in, she'll be in good hands.
I hope so.
Yes.
You got big shoes to fill over here.
Thank you, Lucy.
Thank you, Lucy. Thank you.
Good job, Lucy. Lucy, can you tell us where you're going to school again, please?
I will be attending Creighton University.
And what will you be studying?
Exercise science on the pre-physical therapy track.
Come back and see me?
Yes.
Shoulders, knees, hips.
I will be back someday.
Work with Evan.
Yes, yes.
Great. Good job. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Superintendent Warner.
First of all, I just would like to introduce Kelly Sampson, who's here this evening. She is the new Barbara, or the new Executive Secretary to the Superintendent of Schools and to the District of East Bridgewater. As you know, Barbara will be leaving us, and she'll be here in a couple of weeks, I think, to say goodbye to everybody at a school committee meeting. Kelly met with principals and teachers and union reps one week, and then met with central office and Ellen Pennington for the school committee, second week. And then I called, had some individual meetings with three people. And Kelly has been in the district. Her children are in the district. And she's also, she was also the PTA, or PTO president over at Central School, has done a really nice job with that. She'll no longer be the Chair of the PTO. There'll be some conflicts with that, but I think she'll still be part of, I think she'll still be part of the organizations, and being at some of those meetings, and trying to help out as much as she can with her children. So I welcome Kelly to East Bridgewater Public Schools and to the Superintendent's Office.
Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you.
It was on my corner, because we weren't sure what was going to happen, but the evaluation and timeline, my hopes were, whatever you want to tell me, or how you want to do this, but I'm thinking would be at the end of June. It is extremely busy at this time, and to get it to you, but I'll try to get it to you within the next week and a half or two, and then come back around for the evidence. And Kelly and I were talking about it, that's what we're going to, she's coming in tomorrow, and she starts on June 1. So that's another thing. She'll be, or June 2? Is it June 1? June 1. So Kelly starts with Barbara. They'll work together for the month of June. But Kelly is coming in tomorrow to sort of work with me in my office for a little bit, and sort of get acclimated to what's happening. So if that's okay with you, that time.
What's the timeline now?
I'll try to get it, well, I get it to you by the next school committee meeting, which is June 7, right?
And that's what we're going to, like.
The evidence, the evidence, we know that the goals, we know what the goals are, the CBA. We know that we got a couple of chip shots in there, strategic plan, CBA. We talked about the data assessment on the dibbles, or using the assessments that we use, the assessment tools that we use in the district, how we use them, what we did with them, and how we're using them going forward.
So the evidence by the 8?
I would hope so.
Okay.
I have it. I just want to put it together.
Yeah, okay. And then, so if she gets us the evidence by the 8, then.
It would be the last school committee.
Yeah.
Meeting in June 20.
Oh, that we would give it to you.
Well, I, yeah.
Right. Well, but we have to come up with our timeline of when we're going to do our individual evaluations by. So. So, do you have a calendar out?
I do right here. So if we get evidence at the meeting on the 7th, and then our final meeting of the year is the 21st.
So in between that, we need to, like, maybe give, like, a three or four day, the 8th is a Tuesday.
It's the 7th, right?
I mean, the 7th is a Tuesday.
The 7th is a Tuesday.
So can we have, is it, is it go through Saturday, Sunday, turn it in by Monday? Either that Friday or Monday, turn in the evaluations, and then the sub?
And then we have the rest of that week.
Yes, that we can book, we can schedule to meet either that, that, what's that Monday? The Monday after the 7th?
The Monday after the 7th is the 13th.
The 13th, so we could meet on the 13th or 14th or 15th, sometime that week to compile the individual.
I just add that you could also, we have plenty of time. You could also call the school committee meeting for the last week of June to evaluate the superintendent of schools. If you wanted to have one on June 20th, I'm just pretending. You want one on June 22nd, have one on June 22nd. If you wanted to just have one to evaluate the superintendent of schools the following week to give you more time. If you want to come back in July, you can do it.
We could if people aren't. I might be away, so.
I get it.
Well, we could potentially give you your evaluation, like, on the 22nd of June, if everything flows nicely.
Yeah, I'm just trying to give everybody time and.
So I'm possibly away the 16th and 17th, but possibly not. The reasons not to be away are adding up. Every day, another conflict. But we could, if we got, so if we got everything the 7th, and then everybody turned in their stuff, the 13th.
Do you think that's due? What day of the week is that?
Monday.
Okay. You want to do that day?
And then we could, I mean, I'm available.
I think, I think it's worth a shot. Okay.
Yeah, I would.
So the last school committee.
And then?
22nd. A meeting in the following week.
Yeah.
Ellen, would you think that we can turn everything back in by the 13th? And on the 21st, if we decide that we can't make a decision, then we can schedule something.
Oh, yeah, we could do that. We could.
I think our goal would be to try and get it done for the 21st, though, it sounds like.
Yes, that would be ideal.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Everybody okay with that timeline?
If it works for you getting everything together, Liz.
I guess we'll wait and see. So evidence by the 7th.
Member review, I'm just going to call it member review by, we'll call it 6/13.
Yep.
And then subcommittee.
Will have to meet.
Will have to meet.
Before.
Before the 20th.
Either Tuesday or Wednesday.
Well, I'm going to pull out my calendar. I'm going to do that, too. Sorry.
Just remember, you've seen everything that we've done this year at the school committees. So that's part of the evaluation processes. You're seeing it as we go through. One of them is getting the contract done with the teachers. How'd we do? What did you think? Were you in the process? Did the committee know? The others, the strategic plan, so you came to the meeting, so you're on the committee, how we did those. So, I mean, you, seeing it in format, it'll just, I don't think it's going to take you that.
No. What days did you say you might be away?
The 16th to the 20th.
Oh, so we could meet 13th, 14th, or 15th?
Yes.
I think we're going to have to in order to decide if we're going to vote on it for the 21st anyway.
Okay. And so let me just send you an email, and you guys can check your schedule and see what day is best. You can just get back to me?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Is this just for the subcommittee?
Yeah.
And then the subcommittee will, we just, we combine them, and then we'll present the full evaluation, or one evaluation to the superintendent, hopefully the 21st. And then, yeah.
And who's the superintendent again?
Who's on first? Yeah.
Couple of things that I wanted to mention. A week ago, I guess it was on the 13th and 14th, and then on the 20th, last Friday, the music parents, or the music kids from grades three through 12, and the music parents had this great, did a great job of their presentations and putting on these two nights with the kids. I told Mrs. MP, I told Bill Clements, I told Andrew Gentile how impressed I was with all of the kids, how impressed I was with all of our music educators that we had. I'm, obviously, I don't, I was never, I love music, but I was, that wasn't my thing in school. And it's so impressive to watch these kids because they got up there. I'm really impressed with the kid that did the bass when he got up, and he put the hat on. I just thought he was terrific. And that little kid, the little guy, the little kids that were singing. I mean, a couple of those little girls, like, just were taking deep breaths and just belting it out. It was just awesome. And it's just nice to see them performing. And after a whole year of practice and watching them perform, and the music parents doing raffles, and I think they put these baskets together. I was very fortunate to win a basket that night, a taco basket. And it'll be, I got a Fiesta's gift card in it. It'll be my first time I go to Fiesta's. I've asked Dr. Williams many times to take me, because she loves it so much over there, but she says no. So now I'll get to go by myself for a school committee meeting.
Take Barbara.
She doesn't take me. Yeah, Barbara, maybe Barbara and I. But it was really nice. And I told Mrs., I told MP the other day, just, it was fantastic. What I liked about it the most is that they got all the schools together. And it was, it was just to see the whole, to see it from one end to the other. You know, the bookends of the schools, and I, we have a new young music teacher at Central School. I got to talk with her a few minutes, because I don't get that time all the time to see them. And she was the, sort of, the emcee that night, and I think maybe we might see second grade next year. I think second grade will be doing something in a week or so. So it's just really nice to see that, because we see sports all the time. When you get here, you see them out on the field, or you see them in the paper. And sometimes, music and drama doesn't get that highlighted or spotlight. And it was really nice to see it the other night. I'm very impressed. And so I wanted to bring that up and congratulate all the, all the kids. I thought it was terrific. And there'll be a graduation, and they've got a couple other, a couple other things coming up, and some events over the summer, and this and that. So that was great. On June 5th, we have the multi, there's a multicultural event, community engagement up in the town common, and that is EBCC, and they'll be putting on, like, a multicultural fair. And there's going to be vendors there. They're asking to look at their website. You can see it up on my Twitter. They had in the EB Town, the newsletter that comes out. Beth Hayes sends it out. And you can, they have a link to Eventbrite to just say that you're coming or not coming, just so the vendors know how much to, how much food to bring. So I wanted to mention that this evening. And if anybody wants to get involved with EBCC or come to any of those meetings, you can click on the EBCC link and ask for more information and to get involved with that. Last week, when we did not have a chair, I know that Ellen Pennington had spoken to Amanda, and Amanda said, hey, there's a couple of updates that I wanted to see. The day that it came through, you said Niasse, I said, we don't have an update. I called Bill. He says, we don't have an update. You can see by the timeline. I, well, either you know somebody, and we didn't know anything. But I think later that day, Bill and I, at about 9 o'clock at night, I think Bill was like, or I sent it to Bill and said, you've got to be kidding me. It's just, no.
Sorry.
Bill, do you want to come up and speak to Niasse? Just pull it up to that mic.
And if I can just give one more plug for Lucy. So I think she probably spent more hours with this committee than I did over the last year, and I'm sure she did a much better job representing the school. But she has left some very big shoes, and at the same time, we're very excited for Lilia to join us also. So, thank you again.
Thank you.
Of course. So my understanding is that the committee has this May 18th letter in your packets, so I won't belabor going through that too quickly. Where any committee members that either would like a refresher, or maybe would like to see the earlier letter that was submitted, I'm happy to share that out at another time if anybody's looking for that reading. But when this letter came through a couple of days ago, Superintendent Legault and I sat down, and she just asked me to speak to some of the ongoing work. And I'm going to skip the first, select, the first section of bullets and move very quickly through the second. We knew when this report was submitted that it was being submitted in year four of the cycle, and that regardless of how well we did, year five report is going to be coming in next February. So while we submitted the report, the work did not stop. So there are some things that I have not reported out to this committee over the past few months, and that's what I'm going to try to speak to today. In that first, in the second section, that first bullet around providing evidence that curriculum is designed to ensure that all students can practice and achieve the vision of a graduate. I'm excited to share the work that has continued and has remained the focal point of the instructional leadership team at the junior, senior high school. There has been a lot of work to make those five Cs, communication, collaboration, creation and innovation, critical thinking, citizenship, lived and measured in an authentic way. The shortest version is, we are in the process of designing manageable rubrics that measure those across the curriculum from grade and department level, but also vertically throughout the time that we have our students here from grades seven through 12. We want it to be meaningful measurement. We do not want it to be another thing that falls on the plates of teachers, which is why the instructional leadership team is designing that. But the goal is to kind of circulate it through. So it won't, as an example, it won't always fall to the English teachers to measure collaboration. It won't always fall to the social studies teachers to measure citizenship. But at the end, not only the work that we're doing, we're pretty excited that in tandem with Erin Fisher in the districts, we've actually managed to take advantage of some new technologies supported to us by Google Suite. And the work that the staff is doing currently and will continue to be doing, we've actually submitted, and I don't know, we have submitted a proposal to MasQ to kind of show how that is, we're killing a couple of birds with one, or one stone. Not only are we doing it, trying to model how this technology can be used to create this Google space where individuals, sometimes teachers, hopefully in the future, students, can have a new way to collaborate meaningfully to get some work done. So we're pretty excited there, both with the work that's being done and how it's happening. In that second bullet there, there's a lot of things that are ongoing. Throughout the course of this school year and looking ahead towards next year, we have taken considerable time during staff meetings here in this building to examine current research practices specifically around grading, to have discussions around them. There are a lot of feelings around grading, particularly when you get into the multi-layered onion of even in a safe space, asking teachers to open up their grade books and talk about what is it and why and how, and engaging in meaningful discussion around those grading practices. Included in that, the staff do not know this yet, but I'm going to be asking several staff members to speak to their experiences as they have kind of jumped out in terms of piloting some standards-based grading. Frankly, it carries more weight, sometimes teachers hearing that from colleagues as opposed to administration in terms of thinking what should or shouldn't be done. We've also incorporated this into our hiring practices. We look, and there are already some names that have been signed off on, and as we continue to put hiring packets towards the superintendent's office. But in terms of screening new candidates, be they, you know, fresh out of school or a seasoned veteran, we want to know a candidate's familiarity with current research in the field. That's an important part, and that's woven into the hiring process, as well as frankly, beliefs around grading. And to be frank, we're not looking for any set belief. Any candidates out there that are interested in working at East Bridgewater someday, what we're looking for is a reflective component. Anybody that walks in and thinks they know everything is going to set up alarm bells. But if they want to talk about it, if they want to examine their practices and be meaningful, meaningfully engage in it, that's what we're looking for. Cross-disciplinary learning and authentic opportunities. This morning, I was part of one of the better meetings I've had since I've been at East Bridgewater with Mr. Phelan, Mr. Daly, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Lopes, Mr. Taylor, around special education resources, how we're going to be looking at them, how they're going to be delivered in the building. The idea of moving away from a more traditional resource room style of special education, which actually allows for more authentic learning opportunities. It allows for more classes to fit into a student's schedule while still providing them the service delivery that they need and are entitled to. In addition to all the work that's being done with co-teaching model and Best Practice Academy that's running largely through Dr. Williams' office, I know Superintendent Legault has talked a lot about early college and the opportunities. It doesn't get more authentic than that. Last month, Captain Kelly from the EBFD was here talking to our students about the possibility of having a fire science academy here. If you want to talk about authentic learning experiences, as well as looking ahead towards senior externship opportunities as students are rounding out their senior year and future years, that all speaks to that. If I'm going too quickly, if you have questions, please, please interrupt me. In terms of the data collection, disaggregation, and analysis, we, leading up to that special education meeting, we're doing a lot in terms of looking at student performance data on IEPs. And that's not a, that's not a GUTCH mentality, far from it. We're looking at students on IEPs, on 504s, measuring their progress throughout the year, measuring why they may be trending up, why they may be trending down. And it's not looking for problems. It's as much looking for successes, what is working. And coming in that, sometimes with other aspects, like our child support teams and our student study teams, we are able to recognize, we knew about what this student was going through. We see a trend up in their grades throughout, and we can speak to effective practices that have been put into place. Additionally, the vision of graduate work, as well as ongoing work with our district curriculum accommodation plan. As for the next one, we're actually pretty excited about this, improving access and opportunities to all courses, including electives and heterogeneously grouped classes. Again, I'm going to lean on some early college opportunities that are being put out, as well as we're in, we're heading into the second of a two-year phase of removing prerequisites from our program of studies. In the past, if you wanted to move up a level to go into honors or AP, you needed to meet a certain mathematical requirement. But if you didn't have that 85 or that 90, those doors were closed to you. We still want to make sure we're doing right by students. We're not going to misplace them too high or too low. But at the same time, it's based on authentic communication and recommendation from those teachers, from the teachers who know them. Even with the math teachers, they, something that we've kind of discovered, the progress of a math class over math track typically goes Algebra I, then geometry, then Algebra II. And math teachers now have a voice, and they're saying that the geometry teachers recommending them for algebra, while it's helpful, it might make more sense to also incorporate the previous year's algebra teacher, because geometry is kind of a, which makes a lot of sense. But that's another example of how we're trying to make those authentic and meaningful. There's a lot more information on those last two bullets as well. Frankly, I'm still working on collecting some of that data, working with Mr. Shea. We've been talking about that. But that will be included also in terms of the long-range planning, fiscal planning, budgetary planning. Some of that is also community partnerships outside of the school system. So we just want to pull a little bit more information there. But we're very confident that we'll be able to highlight effective progress in those areas as well. Sorry, I know, I feel like I just motor-mouthed at you for about five minutes, so.
As someone who does a lot of accreditation work for a living, I know how daunting this can be. I think I've heard a tremendous amount of progress, you know, since you've come on board, and really appreciate that and how you've collaborated. And I know how daunting the five-year progress report on top of some of this other stuff is. So just really appreciate you, your staff, the teachers, everyone involved.
Thank you. We, I knew a year or two ago, when I was coming on board and talking with Superintendent Legault and Dr. Williams, we knew this report was here. We knew.
Well, that was nice of you to let him know.
He signed.
And, you know, but, but there has been some, some consistency and a lot of work that has been done. And when we came on board, I think part of this, and I said that publicly, and I said it to the, to the staff, and I say it to the community, I think there might have been times where it wasn't that the work wasn't happening, but it wasn't being captured accurately or completely. And if it's not there, and if you don't have record of it, then people don't know. And that's with, a lot of the work is there, it's just finding an accurate capture. And there are some areas where there is still certainly some growth, and we have some work to do. And that's also getting out in front of it and explaining the, explaining the why and getting behind it, getting meaningful buy-in.
What's next on the timeline? Like, where, after, now that this report is here and you're still working on it, then what comes next? Like, when do they send you it? Oh, the next report comes in February?
Next report is due February 1st.
Okay.
I'll be honest, the next time, I was taking my notes, because it, I knew going in that it wasn't. it wasn't, from February of this past year when I submitted the year four report, we didn't stop until June and then would pick up. So it's capturing the work that is ongoing. And there's a lot of different overlap with the Venn diagrams. As an example, the vision of a graduate work hits on many of these, of these different topics, as well as the work that we're moving forward with grading and instruction. And the thing that I like in here that will actually help us push the building forward, I think, it's not just doing it, it's talking about it. It talks about engaging in meaningful conversation. So that has been taking part of it and frankly, with everything that goes on in the course of a school year, if one ball gets dropped or forgotten for a little bit, well, this is what we need to pick it back up and keep running and keep our momentum moving forward.
Thank you.
Sure.
Excuse me, if I could, the last two bullet points I found were interesting. The reference to community in both, how the community funds and the school implements long-range plan is that one bullet point and the other is update, the community and districts, governing body, funding for staffing. Help me connect those dots there. Where does the community get involved in long-range planning with funding?
The strategic plan.
Okay.
That's really what our budget is built upon as, you know, with a five-year strategic plan, bring it to the school committee. The school committee provides a budget to the town. The budget goes through all the things that are in the strategic plan along with Niask. And I think the biggest thing that he brought up tonight was the heterogeneous, heterogeneous and working with special needs, emotional needs, those types of, and getting rid of that resource and getting, we're always going to support kids, but kids need the opportunity to get out and experience different types of classes. So with that being said, we've started to do that with the strategic plan in place and with the funding that you, that the school committee has supported by, we've put a special education teacher, two special education teachers on every team at the Mitchell School. We started there. So now you have a support teacher in with the, with the teacher in the classroom, so you have two teachers working with a full group. And we're trying to do the same throughout the district. So it's just the increase on supporting the staffing needs that tie into what we're trying to do with the strategic plan that is supported by the school committee. And then the school committee looks at the strategic plan and goes forward and gets the budget passed by the community. And I think the way it's worded, I think it's, it's hard to get through that, but I believe that that's.
Okay. And the strategic plan also had stakeholder meetings.
Yes.
And yeah, so, so I think that's where the community tie is too. They were, I mean, they were open.
I'd also say a little bit of it is a trickle-up effect too, that I or my team at the building level may recognize certain needs and, you know, I can provide some examples, but then I go to Superintendent Legault and I say, this is a need of the building. We have a conversation. If that works, then she goes through Mr. Shea and then it gets woven into the budget process and things like bringing on school adjustment counselors or certain, you know, specialized areas, like we have an autism, we're trying, we're trying to create an autism spectrum classroom to meet the needs of students based on where our student population is. That's a new position, that's something there that's currently posted. We hope to have that higher wrapped up by the end of June, but those are like microcosmic examples of how it gets there, but that doesn't happen without community buy-in, without community involvement, even down to capital projects that, you know, were voted on in front of town meeting a couple of weeks ago.
Thank you.
Our first Niask when we first came through, I think, feels like it was 20 years ago, when we, when they first came here and they discussed this with us, one of the big things they said that, that central office, school committee, central office did not support staffing, curriculum needs in special areas here at the high school, junior, senior high school. We started, it was very quickly, when they saw that we had started to change that, this administration had started to change that, they saw that very quickly. However, over the last five years, and as you remember, they did give us, make some extensions on this due to changeover in administration. Now, we use the strategic plan strategically to get this funding, to put in place the staffing and support needs for students.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Mr. Commens, can you give me a copy of those notes so I can give, or clean them up and we can send them to the school committee just so they can have your notes?
Absolutely, I can get those to you by tomorrow morning.
Great, and I'll send them out.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Dr. Williams, I know that we also had DESI Consulting Group come in to discuss with us what we're doing in the district. I know that that came up, we have not got the final report, but I want Dr. Williams to just address both components of the report.
Yeah, so just for Becky and Gordon, not having been here at the beginning of the year, the Department of Elementary and Secondary had come up with a new review format. It's a district target review and districts are chosen at random to go through this target review. It's not tied to any accreditation, it's not tied to any corrective action. It's really just an opportunity for the state to come in, take a look at our instructional practices, to take a look at the documents we use for curriculum instruction assessment, to look at culture and climate. However, DESI has contracted with a research organization to conduct the review, so they don't actually come out on site. AIR Research was the organization that we worked with, so we had a failed rep from AIR. They ended up coming out the first week in March and they were here over the course of the week. During that week, prior to the week, we uploaded documents from budgetary documents, curriculum documents, organizational documents. Then they came out, they conducted observations in classrooms of all three buildings. They conducted focus interviews and focus groups. From there, they informed us that by late April to mid-May, we would get a draft of the report. We would receive three reports, one on the documents submitted, a report on what came out of the interviews and focus groups, and then a third on the observations. And then from those three reports, they would do a summative culminating all three of those prongs. We did receive a draft of classroom observations, that was probably maybe the end of April. It was sent to me by the field rep saying, here's part one, you'll be getting the other two parts. So I did share it with the building principals. I said, you know, it's, it's really not fair to look through just the one lens, we want to make sure that we have the, the other two reports, certainly because we don't want to look like we're coming out just targeting what they saw in the classrooms. We want to be able to back that up with what was said in the meetings, what was said in the interviews and what we shared for, for documents. Because clearly, everything is a snapshot and we needed the, the complete picture before we put anything into, into practice. We have not received the other two. I've reached out to the state. Unfortunately, the representative from DESI's email bounced back. So.
That's kind of uncommon.
So I, I have not heard from the field rep from the organization either. When I first heard from her, she said that we will hear from DESI. They submit everything to DESI and then DESI submits to us. So I'm hopeful, because there was a lot of work and time and effort that was put into it, so I'm hopeful we get the other three. Certainly, if we don't, we still have information from the, the observations. I can tell you, from the report of the observations, they rate everything on a scale from one to seven. If we receive a one, two or three, that's kind of considered the low range. If any of the ratings are four, five and six, that's mid-range. No, I'm sorry, four and five are mid-range and then six, seven is high range. We scored very well on, on climate and culture and classroom organization and management. I will say, we were more towards mid-range on instructional practices, mainly feedback. So that is really good information for us, especially at all buildings, you know, how we give students instructional feedback within the classroom. I can only gather that through those snapshots of observations. The feedback was more, you know, yes, that's right, no, that's not right, shorter exchanges as opposed to more dialogue around, you know, why a student had a particular answer or why their answer wasn't correct, or how they could get an incorrect answer to look more like a correct answer. At the lower levels, it's a lot on language that we use with students too and giving more opportunities for them to use their language as opposed to hearing a lot of language from staff. The ratio of students talking to staff talking was unmatched and they're looking for that to be more of a match between how much time the teacher's spending talking and how much time the student is spending talking. So those are just, you know, some little snapshots from the observations, but, you know, I'm hopeful we'll get the other two components so that we can put a complete picture together and certainly have this information become actionable within our strategic plan and certainly in our school improvement plans.
Do they break down, I mean, I know you only have one, did they break it down by building or is it just?
Yes.
Okay, cool.
I'm assuming this would be helpful also for our five-year report.
Yeah, I was thinking of.
Because as we, you know, we talked about the hardest part is documenting a lot of the stuff and that's some nice documentation if, if we get them.
Right, right. So if nothing else, we'll have that one component that we can work with, but as I said, I'm holding out hope that we'll get the others. Talking to, you know, chosen at random, it was kind of, I don't know, coincidental. Bridgewater, Rainham also was chosen, Easton was chosen, Abington was chosen, Dartmouth was chosen, so it seems like a lot of districts were chosen and maybe too many reviews were put into place without a lot of manpower to be able to formulate the, the reporting part of it, but.
Does anybody have any?
I'll keep you posted.
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome.
Does anybody have any more questions? We have, we have a retirement letter.
Yeah, that comes, I can do that at the end. I think that John has a lot to go over.
Except we have Mr. Shea who's going to go over budget line item adjustments.
So, in your package, there are four pages of line item budget detail. The power to transfer amounts between line items is exclusive to the school committee. So we're getting near the end of, end of the year, so I am proposing to make all of these line item changes to the budget. And these are based on, upon my salary projections for the end of the year, encumbrances that have occurred, and also estimated expenses through the end of the year. What this is doing is in total, it's moving $113,711 from the non-salary line items, to the non-salary line items from the salary line items. It does not change the total budget at all, it's just allocating differently for what we are experiencing through expenses for the end of the year. As you know, the budget is done six months before the, the school year even starts. During those six months, we have resignations, new hires, additional retirements, grants, and also during the year, we have changes in ESL, number of ESL students, changes in inflation. There are a lot of variables that, that are behind all these changes in the line item budgets, but I am happy to answer any specific questions you may have.
Where did you say you were going to be taking this money from? Just in between these lines and just?
Yeah, so we can start on page one, I'll show you. So advertising, we had an original budget of $4,750 in advertising. I'm proposing to adjust that budget to 870. So that would reduce that one line item by $3,880. And using that methodology for every line item, you can see all the changes that I am proposing. The first grouping is non-salary budget, which is pages one, two and halfway through page three. And you can see, I am proposing to increase the non-salary budget from 3.3 million to 3.4 million. And the salary budget, the summation of all the line items would be to change the original budget of $18,666,478 to $18,552,767. So that will reduce all the salary line items by $113,711 and you can see the grand total does not change.
Are any of these, trying to think of how to word my question. I know things change over the course of the year, obviously. Are any of these changes something that we could expect to stay? Like, like maybe we budgeted a certain amount for a certain thing and that came in more or less than expected? Are any of these things that we could anticipate?
Next year's budget?
Next, like, right, so if, if maybe central office spends a ton on paper, you know, this year, is that something that's like, oh, well, they'll probably spend the same amount next year? Or there was this special circumstance which, you know, resulted in this and that's not going to happen next year? So, you know, is that type of?
Oh, we, we take all that into account in producing, I say next year's budget.
But the, yeah.
So, like, if you look at one specific line item. Yeah, that's a good one, interpretation services. That is on page two, if you look at 301,300-581, which are non-sped interpretation services. You can see we budgeted $4,000.
Right.
We're, we're coming in at $12,330. So that's what I base next year's.
Next year's budget on, okay.
And there are two, like, big increases, two of which are, well, a couple, but, like, two are in transportation, so I assume that we all know that that makes sense. And I'm just curious about the, on page two, the, it's 300-615 and 664, the sped tuitions, those are just big differences? Do they, are they like complementary where we're under?
So at, at the beginning of the year, I, I work with the, with the special ed department and we budget for every student that is expected to go out, out of district tuition. We just, in this particular case, for the public programs, we had less.
Gotcha.
But you can see, if you go down to the bottom of the page.
Yep.
300,664 sped tuitions for collaboratives, that actually went up.
Yeah, yeah.
Can I ask you a question? Well, just out of curiosity, the highest, oh, it's page three and it's 1,300-112.
Yep.
Was that a reduction because maybe we didn't have as many subs or what? I don't know.
So that is our, our classroom teachers' pay and if, before I get into the salaries, staffing levels did not change. So this doesn't, this, these changes are not due to any staffing level. So staffing levels that were budgeted are what they are. But you can see on that line item, that decreased 172,000. We had a couple retirements that occurred after the budget was done. And if you have a teacher retiring, making, you know, a certain amount of money and you're hiring a new person at a lesser amount, you can, you also, we had an increase of FMLAs, leave of absences, so the line below that, high school substitutes, you see that line increasing. So that, that decrease is offset by some increase in the high schools substitute line item, but we also had some retirements that occurred after we had finalized the budget.
Thank you. Does anybody have any more questions?
The adjusted budgets are reflective of money that's already been spent?
Money that has been spent and money that is projected to be spent.
So nothing was like, so if I look at the first line, the advertising.
Yeah.
Original budget was 4750, it was reduced to 870, that was just what was spent?
Yeah, it was what was spent or what has been encumbered to date.
Okay. So there's nothing taken out of it.
If we have, if we have bills outstanding, that's taken into account. So if we have, if we have bills outstanding, that's taken into account in this also.
And the graduation was significantly more than anticipated?
Yeah, I added a few extra thousand to the graduation budget, because it's a Friday night, and I do not know really what to expect for some of the rentals, for the stage, I mean, we're renting the stage for more than one day, I believe, now it's three days, so I wanted to make sure we had enough money in the graduation budget.
The top somewhere. 300-506. I just look for the ones that have big differences, but it, I get it, you have to move from one part to others, it doesn't, but it does.
Joanne, for, for the purposes of your taking the minutes, would you like us to wait until the end, and we can just vote on it with the rest of the action items, and it would be easier for you, or?
It is, but if you prefer to not, it's actually mine.
Oh, I can wait and just go buzz through them at the end.
Still, John's still up.
In your package, it's also a copy of the end-of-year report audit. Every year, the end-of-year report is, is reviewed, all the documentation is reviewed, the procedures are reviewed, there's about 40 different items that the auditors review. I have included in your package, it is addressed to you, the audit report.
That's by Lynch, Marini, and Associates?
Yes. I think historically, sometimes it's presented at the school committee meetings, sometimes it's, it's just emailed out, but this is a good one, so I want to.
Go ahead, John.
No, I, that's.
Was there, was there, there was no marks on this, right, John?
There were two findings. One was, they reviewed, as you know, we have an agreement with the town for the town allocated costs, and those are like health insurance and things like that. So we have an agreement with the town, which we did about nine months ago. The auditors would like a little more detail in the, in the way the calculations are performed, so I'll be working with the town on that. The other item was, last year's audit, they identified an amount in the circuit breaker line item, which I disagreed with their findings, I had a difference of opinion with their findings. I thought the way I reported it was more accurate, accurate. It was a minor amount. When they have a finding, a numerical finding, I'm supposed to file an amended, amended end-of-year report. I did not do that. The amount was insignificant, insignificant, it changed per pupil spending by 20 cents, I believe, but I will have to ensure that, well, I won't have to do one next year, because I didn't find them.
It was an excellent report, great job, John.
Do, do we pay for that audit, or does DESI pay for it?
We pay for it.
So every school pays, have it audited by DESI standards?
Yep.
John, are we, we're moving from Lynch and Marini?
Yeah, so this firm also does the town audit, and the town went out to bid, and there's a new auditing firm coming in. So I have contacted them, and I'm waiting to hear from them about performing our audit also.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
I wanted to send this around, John and I received this, this week, and it's, it's really just, it's sort of a, an easy sheet for superintendent, it's really for superintendents to be able to read about the budget and about what, where the house, the house of ways are, and it's just something for you to have, to see what's going on, where the house is, where the budget is, what, what you're seeing, you know, they did increase the circuit breaker, especially, special ed funding, and so, but it just, they sent it to us because it makes it easier for us to understand it, where the, the business administrators obviously speak in a different language than us. You know, these guys are their own auditors, they're accountants, and John does such a great job with this, that they sort of send out a cheat sheet for us, so that we can look at, and I received it the other day, and I said to John, I said, do you want me to, you know, let's share this, sort of just showing you what's going on up at the, the State House and where we're at.
Thank you.
Any idea when we'll hear, anything?
It should be coming quick. I would say in the next couple of weeks, right? Because they're gonna, they want to go on vacation.
Hmm.
Right? July 1st, they want, they want to be out of their offices as well.
Anybody have any questions about it?
Just for.
I think you want to talk about that retirement?
Billy Robertson has been a custodian at the Gordon W. Mitchell School for a very long time. He came and met with me, he's asked, he'd like to put in his retirement papers, I've accepted it. I can tell you that he went back and forth about this, like many, like many teachers do. I don't think Barbara went back and forth about this, I think she's ready to go, but we'll miss Billy, he's a good guy, and we'll miss him, and, but we wish him the best of luck on his retirement.
Thank you, have a nice retirement. I don't see anyone here for public comment, so we will skip past that. And at this time, I would take a motion to approve the school committee meeting minutes from April 26, 2022, and May 10, 2022.
And second.
Who, who?
Moved.
Oh, Scott motioned, you were very quiet. Scott motioned and Amanda seconded it, and.
I think there's one edit on the May 10 meeting minutes, right?
Yes.
And I think it's the first line, the date is just changed from April 12 to May 10.
Yes, I sent that to the committee earlier today, because I thought we'd pick it up.
Okay, thank you. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
And I would. Thank you. I would take a motion to, after review, approve payroll warrant 47SV dated 5/18/2022.
So moved.
Moved by Amanda.
Second.
Second by Scott, all in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
Abstain.
Thank you. It's weird, because now I'm not saying, never mind. I take a motion to approve payroll warrant 48S dated May 25, 2022.
So moved.
Moved by Amanda.
Second.
Second by Scott, all in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
Thank you. And I would take a motion to approve John Shea's request for budget line item adjustments.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Amanda, second by Scott, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. And action is required by, oh, I would take a motion to approve the request from Mrs. Amy Rinker, East Bridgewater Junior Senior High School Instructional Support Assistant, to present her daughter Maya Rinker her diploma at the graduation ceremony for the class of 2022.
So moved.
Moved by Amanda.
Second.
Second by Scott, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. That was unanimous. And then, just as a technicality, I just, I just want to make sure, so I think it's a good idea if we just, even though we discussed it and kind of all agreed to it, but we could all just take a quick vote on the, the timeline for June 7, June 13, and with, I think.
Do we have to take a vote?
No, we all, well, we agreed, we all agreed.
We have to figure out ours.
Oh, right. But it's like, to be determined for what we decide to meet, that's fine, never mind.
I understand.
And we all agreed, so it doesn't, it's okay. And I want to thank EB Cam for always recording our meetings and having it televised, so thank you, EB Cam. And at this time, I would take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Amanda, second by Scott, and thank you, Lucy, for being here one last time, and, oh, the other girl's gone. Well, we look forward to having her. And have fun at your prom.
Thank you.
Have fun.
Thank you.
And we'll see you at graduation.
Yes, I'll be there.
So all in favor for adjourning this meeting?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, it was unanimous.